This conference will now be recorded.
8:30, Dan Seles.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its representative states and our nation under God and in this one, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Michigan County Board Supervisors Meeting, March 11th, 2025. A meeting available in person and by go-to meetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
And the motion is our second?
Oh, sorry.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the March 4th meeting minutes and claims. Everyone get a chance to look at the meeting minutes from last week?
Make the motion approve the March 4th meeting and claim?
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I can second that.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Room call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. County Attorney.
I don't have anything for you this morning. I do have to go up to the courtroom at 8:45 or a few minutes before. May not take very long. I may be back, but sometimes you don't know how long things are going to take, so.
Any questions for County Attorney? Thank you. Sheriff update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
About the only thing I have for you is I just wanted to update you on the total funds raised for the K-9. I received a check of $2,500 yesterday, so we're at $14,450 of the $15,000 that we tried to raise, and maybe we'll get some more yet, but really it's went well. Jack is training with the new K-9 now, and that is about five weeks of training, and then after that he'll be out on the street on patrol with Jack, so he'll get to know him over here at some point, and everybody can see what you think. But that's where we're at with the K-9 program. It's moving along pretty well. Other than that, I don't have anything. If you have questions for me, I guess I do have a question for the board. Has anybody seen any activity of survey for the pipeline?
I haven't.
They were supposed to, I think, what, two weeks ago we got an email they were going to start, but we responded to that email. I haven't been called and haven't seen anybody around, so I don't know what their status is, I guess. Didn't know if you guys did. So, okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Department head discussion.
So in regards to the Maple Heights, Rachel, can you put on next week's agenda discussion and possible action on Mitchell County's, discussion and possible action on Maple Heights commitment? So I talked with Brock, and First Citizens feels that the project is at the viewing stage, where the board will take a look at it if they want. So if the board wants to go look at it, get a hold of Brock, and line something up as far as to give a tour for this next week. And then next week we can consider as far as obligating what we said we would obligate to the project.
To add on that, I did talk with Jenny about two weeks ago or so. You had talked with Heather, or was it Heather? And she was going to line up a couple tours when we made a decision when to do it, but a year farther along than that, so we have.
So, yeah, I mean, if you want to go through Brock or if you want to go through me to get that coordinated, she's definitely available to give you guys a tour. You guys want one?
Yeah, I wouldn't exclude any others. I just talked with Brock.
You're fine.
The board can do that this weekend.
Okay.
First Citizens feels that it's ready to be looked at if people want to.
Any other department head? Anyone online?
Somebody's raising their hand there.
All right. County engineer update.
I don't have much for you this morning. Eight weeks ago we got a quote for the mix shed, our replacement, and Mother Nature took care of that for us. So we've got that order. The tear got big enough that it blew it open. So in the next couple of weeks I'll have the DOT budget and program ready for your review. I've got to get it submitted to the DOT first, then they want to bring it back to us for your approval. It's a different system they're doing this year for approvals. So they're trying to avoid having you guys approve it, we submit to the DOT, and then they see some errors in project numbers or whatever, and then they kick it back out to us again. So we're going to do DOT approval review first and then come back and submit it. So that's all I got for you this morning.
Thank you. Number seven, discussion and possible action on North Iowa Regional Housing Authority payment in view of taxes waiver request.
This is something that's done every year, was in our mail slot, so I just put it on the agenda first to look at it. And what they do is, rather than pay taxes, they put the money back into the locations that they have in order to do improvements to the locations.
So I did try to reach out to Justin just to ask a few questions, and we played some phone tag back and forth here over the last week. My question was just going to be, you know, what kinds of improvements or, you know, it's not a ton of money that we're kicking back, so what types of improvements or support are they providing for that facility? It's 10 units, and so.
The first year I did the same thing. I got ahold of them, and he did reply with the stuff that they did at that time.
Yep.
I guess I can't remember exactly what it was. If it was carpeting or some appliances or, they did do something back then.
Right. Yeah, that was just my question, and I'll follow up with him again. But so how many years has the, those apartments been out there under the North Iowa Federal? Do we, so we've been kicking this back every year, correct? That's my understanding?
As long as four years that some of us have been here, we have been, and I believe it's been four or five, but I don't know that answer.
So it's in lieu of the interest amount that would be coming back?
Paying in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, tax. In lieu of the property tax, yeah.
Any other discussion? Any, is there a motion to approve North Iowa Regional Housing Authority payment request?
I move to approve that.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Room call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on engagement letter. I am sorry, I forgot to send this in your meeting package, but, and I forgot my computer today, so Jim, thank you for printing them off. So before, I know Pam has a lot of notes from this meeting, and she has given that to us, right, and we kind of went over some of it too last week. This engagement letter has not been brought to the Board of the Commissions yet, and as planning and zoning interim, I still would like them to take, to see this and talk it over at their April 2nd meeting before we even do any action, because then they will recommend sending it to the Board of Supervisors to discuss and possibly, possibly approve. I'm not sure, but that's just my opinion. I feel like we should have the Board of Commissions look at this, talk to Tim Whipple, have Amanda involved. She will be back by then, so you guys can just look this over and read it if you like, and if you want to discuss, you can.
So I just wanted to recap a little bit, and I've recapped for all the supervisors the conversation that Sidney and I had with, phone conversation with Tim Whipple. And from what I gathered from that conversation, our most urgent need is to get a road crossing or right-of-way ordinance in place. He also spoke some about a survey ordinance or those kinds of things as well. So I've recapped much of that for all of you, and he gave us three counties that would be a good example to use, and said that he would definitely be willing to put together the template and then work with the county engineer. And I haven't had a chance to follow up yet with Rich, because he's been busy swamped. So, but one of the key things that comes from this conversation is, is that many of these counties work intensely with their county engineers, and so a lot of, you know, those things came from there. You know, I guess I would remind our board that it is within our abilities as a Board of Supervisors to establish rules and permits relating to the occupancy of our county roads and highways, and to recover and allocate costs regarding that to assure that our citizens are safe when they're working on these roads, that kind of thing. So I think that, in my mind, may be the initial step that we need to take, to take forward. And there again, I guess my question is, the route that we take, and why is that through the Planning and Zoning Committee versus your Board of Supervisors to take that to the Planning and Zoning Committee, or to at least put together a letter of engagement with the lawyer to start that process? Because the Planning and Zoning Committee is going to meet, if they wait until Amanda gets back, it would be into April is when their meeting is scheduled, and I understand that that's already set. Sidney had worked on getting that set up with the Planning and Zoning Committee, but if we can have something in front of them, then it allows them to either act or refuse to, you know, or deny any kind of action moving forward. But otherwise, we've kind of throttled them for another month or so. And so I just think in terms of timeliness, Tim Whipple did mention that to try to get something in place, you know, by May. So that's why I'm thinking that maybe we need to, you know, move forward with an engagement with Tim Whipple. It is something we've also discussed with our own attorney, and he was in support of that at the time. So, and we could certainly, you know, bring Aaron back in or when he comes back.
Depending on zoning, get some of those ordinances, I mean, they already have some of them, did they, as far as to look at, consider? Am I correct on that?
Right.
Yeah. We gave, I gave them 10 ordinances, all different types of ordinances. They haven't, I don't think there was a road crossing ordinance in that pile, so they haven't really looked at that. It would be nice for them to do some more discussion, look at how much these fees are going to cost as well, and listen to, I was going to have Tim come to that meeting and have them.
To the Planning and Zoning meeting.
Have him talk to them.
So at that point, you're already engaged.
And we can see if Rich is available that night, if they want to talk about road crossing.
Is this a restructuring of our utility permit then?
So that's, that's one of the questions that we need to put forward to you and also to Rachel, is what do we have in place, or do we have any right-of-way ordinances in place? The one that he spoke up quite highly was, it is, is it Braemer? Yeah, so he spoke of Braemer, Wright County, and said that, you know, those were very good right-of-way ordinances, and that it was most important to implement those, and because of the county drainage districts as well, you know.
We're a little bit ordinance light in this kind of comparison to counties, but we do have.
He expressed that.
We have the utility permit that we use frequently when people want to cross with a tile or, I don't know. So, I mean, we don't need to discuss it now, but there are a lot of things on the permit that we probably should discuss at another time if we want to.
So we're really at no point to make a decision today, because we need to talk to Rich, have communications with him, go over a few things.
I guess my take on it is that I'm not in a big rush to do this for a number of different reasons. One is South Dakota just said that they're not going to allow eminent domain, so that's pretty much put up a block at the state line. As far as survey ordinances, what has been put before us before, I totally did not support because it was going to be, it would affect the people of normal surveys, not just utilities, but the way that was built, it was very, it was going to be costly for just normal surveys. So I didn't support what I saw at that time for that. In regards to right-of-way ordinances, I'm totally fine with our utility permit, because it leaves a lot of these setback distances and stuff up to the engineer, rather than having a blanket policy of things that, I'll back up a little bit. The Braemer County ordinance that was put before us, on paper, some of those setback distances probably looked good, but when you start looking at it as far as out in the field, you start narrowing things away from residences and from crossroad culverts and from tile crossings and from bridges. You pretty much restrict a lot of the right-of-way for anything to be done, whereas our utility permit, it's something the engineer can look at and make a common sense decision rather than a blanket policy of distances and ordinance. So for those reasons, I'm not in a big rush to be doing anything. We're Phase Two of this project. Phase One has litigation lawsuits in regards to ordinances that are already out there. So wait and see what happens with Phase One, wait and see what happens as far as with South Dakota. I mean, I'm not always a wait-and-see person, but I don't want to jump into the fire if there's no reason to do that. So I'm not in a big hurry yet to do this.
I will make a comment, though, and a lot of times, and this is something I asked years ago to the board, a lot of the permit, utility permits, I just approved out right into the board. You guys want me to bring every utility permit to the board? I think a lot of times, if there was anything new that was coming through that was really kind of taking up a lot of space, I would inform you guys. But a lot of the utility permits we get are just aborting across the road to power another building or replacing or modify existing utilities that are there. I didn't want to, I think at that time it was, we didn't really get the board's approval of that stuff. But maybe we just bring every utility permit to the board for approval. That way you guys can see everything, but I don't know if you guys want to go through that or not. Like I said, I asked years ago about it, and it was no, you just take care of it. So I don't know if you guys want to see, because we'll get, you know, I don't know, we'll get a fair amount of utility permits per month that, you know, they want to have turned around in a quick.
You bring up a good point, and he mentioned that, that over the years, county engineers and counties have had to change the direction of their normal workflow, partly because, you know, the future is to put more and more things underground and through ground, and I think Rich would agree with that. Right. And so from the terms of, I'm not speaking to the eminent domain. We can't affect eminent domain, and I don't believe that I've ever proposed that we try to do so, because that's quite honestly out of our hands. But I am proposing that we may have reached a point in time, like Rich says, that we need to address some ordinances and a process, and we need to step forward to protect the county for expenses and the manner in which they bore through roads and come through. I would expect that there would be a lot more requests for such underground or through-ground transportation of things coming from the north, as close as we are to the state line. And so I think it would behooves us to be prepared. And the challenge is that if you wait until the fox is already at the door, then you're limited in how you can move forward with your support statements, your ordinances. I'm not addressing eminent domain, Jim, by any means, and I'm not using that as a guideline. I'm saying that one of the things that many counties have looked at and have had to change their course of action, let's say, is that they're putting right-of-way ordinances in to protect themselves and their citizens. Nothing to do with necessarily setback ordinances, but right-of-way ordinances and assuring that our county is protected and the people are protected. In other words, people that are coming through crossways where they're working, that there's enough right-of-way for them to see when they're working on these kinds of structures or infrastructure. That was my suggestion, and I'm, that's, that's my focus, is to protect the people of Mitchell County.
And my point is that I feel the utility permit is actually working, and we can amend it a lot cheaper rather than having a blanket policy as far as right-of-way. So that's my side of that.
I talked to the Braemer County supervisor, got a copy and sent to Rich for their road crossing ordinance, and they also have in there that roughly it's going to cost them $10,000 for every time they cross the road with the pipeline company, and that goes into the budget for secondary roads.
I think their permit references ordinance, which we don't have, so our permit, but yeah, that's, I don't know, legalities are making somebody pay more than.
I think it's time that we start to update, you know.
They went through the secondary roads rather than planning and zoning to fast-track it to get it going quicker, otherwise.
That comment was also made, yeah.
With planning and zoning, it's taken two years to do the windmill ordinance, and if it takes two years to do a pipeline ordinance, it'll be in the ground or it'll be here before you know it. So I'd agree with Pam that we need an ordinance, and they said we could even take their ordinance, cross out their county and their miles and put our county in.
There have to be some reference changes in it. I did.
Right, right, absolutely.
I guess my thing is, is justification for the high expenses, I guess. I don't know where they came up with their fees. I mean, our permit has a permit fee in it. We've never collected permit fees, because we really don't spend time out there doing any inspection. But if we're going to charge fees for utilities to cross a road, maybe we start charging fees for driveways, because we spend more time on viewing driveway permits than doing anything else, and we don't charge a fee for that. Do we start charging? Because we are taking time out of our day for a private driveway to be installed, yet we don't charge for it. And, you know, should we start charging fees for a lot more than we normally do?
They just add on, there's hazardous pipeline for their fees, not picking on, they didn't name somewhat, they just named that.
Right. So they were saying anything, considering how his pipeline would have a higher fee than, say, electrical or anything else.
They weren't charging for that, it's just, because when they came through the windmills, we got a, we gave them a bill for $700,000 to repair our roads. So they do do damage.
They paid it.
Yeah, and they didn't even blink an eye. So were we too low? I don't know.
So, yeah, those are, those are some questions that I think we need to explore, and maybe we need to spend another week and do some more information seeking. Maybe, Rich, we can touch base with you and do a little more review.
Okay. We will table this. Moving on to number nine, approve recorder's monthly report for February. Looks like we have amount of $7,382.88. Is there a motion to approve recorders?
I move to approve the recorder's report for February. Total amount paid to the treasurer is $73.82.88.
Jim, my motion is our second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Room call, Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve treasurer's monthly report for February. I don't know if Shannon's coming down. She normally does.
I hear someone coming down hallway.
There you go. Wait, there she is. Good morning. I was out in the office, and I came in, I heard you reading numbers on me, but then I heard recorder, so I came down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sorry I didn't come down last month, but I had a staff outside, so you guys handle it fine in the same sense. The report for this month, we had $206,875.88 meeting fees to State of Iowa for motor vehicle. For general basic, which is the county's $11,575.92 for motor vehicle. Postage, what we charge the customers goes right back into the county, so that's $8.42. Driver's license fees was $1,204. We did 172 issuance, and we got an extra $90, because we had nine out of county that came to us. I know there's a lot of discussion that people can go wherever they want, and they can. I know a lot of Mitchell County kids go to Northwood, because it's closer in the San Antonio district, which we understand. I had someone that was concerned about that, and it's not a problem to us. We get people from Floyd County and Howard County, so everyone, whatever's easier for them, they are allowed to go wherever they would like to. So just clarifying, that was out there, that was a concern, not a concern for our office. Organ donation paid to state, $83. Some of that comes through on renewals. Individuals can designate if they'd like to give money to the organ donor fund. Some of it comes through the fact that historically, if a person writes their check out, and years ago it was 50 cents, now it's a dollar per registration renewal is charged for postage. That pays for the postage to the person, and then when they send it to us, for us to mail the registration back, if they come into our office and they have not taken the postage off, we do not give cash back anymore. About a year ago, it was discussed that that's not a good policy with bad checks out there and stuff. If you're handing people back cash, and then a week later their check is no good, and you've given them cash back, it's not a lot, but it does add up. So that's where some of that comes from. The majority of it is people that have a dollar or two that they've written over. They don't want to write any checks, so they. They don't want to write any checks, so they just, we give them the option to donate it to organ donor. Some counties just automatically put it into postage to the county, but we give them the option that they can put to organ donor if they'd like. New fees for registration paid to state was 122,161.49. New registration fees to general basic was 15.88. Just for comparison, last month that was up $300 because we get the extra $10 for every new registration. An individual pays 5% use tax on their purchase price plus $10. That was a new legislation. A few months ago in December, so we're at 15.88 this month, December we were at 1100. So right there's $400. So it is make, gonna make a noticeable improvement in revenues for the office and the county as a whole. So just wanted to point that out. So total motor vehicle and driver's license collections for last month was 344,419.49 cents. Of that Mitchell County kept 15,299.92, which is lower than normal, but also remember it's, it was after Christmas and New Year's, so it uses a lull right now. Right now we're, yesterday alone, I had one staff out, we did $51,000 in motor vehicle alone yesterday. Everyone's getting a tax refund. So there's a lot of cars getting purchased right now, so that'll be sizably higher next month. Property taxes collected was 941,101.49 cents. Penalties for that amount that were the ones in September that people didn't pay, it's their choice. If they want to pay them in September or March, some people pay them both. Some people wait till March when they get the taxes and pay both halves. So that was 3.48, it was our penalties. Special assessments was 2,607.25. If the person sells a house, they have to pay off the special assessment. And that's what that instance was, an individual, a house was sold, so they came in and paid it off. We get $5 for every collection for special assessments for our cities. And on that one, we did get one $5 because it was one payment. Tax sales certificates, we had one redeemed for 18.57. And then futures were 3.91.83. That's just, people do like to pay ahead or they made a mistake. We will have a sizable one this coming month because I just had a person that, if it's a farmer sheep overpaid, we don't refund individuals if they have a check for receipt. We've already cashed it and they decided that they paid something in error because they use that check as their receipt for the income taxes. So in discussion with other county treasurers, it's not a good practice to refund the money because they do have a receipt for that amount. So our policy is when it's a large amount and it's a farmer, we do request that they just put it towards September because they are able to use that cash check as a receipt. So it's kind of hard to track. Not that it's our point, but it's just a good policy. You don't want to give them $3,000 of deductions if they truly didn't have, so. Interest on investments was 66,817.78. And then miscellaneous receipts from other county departments that were processed, there was 48 of them and the amount was 733,124.35 cents. So the total amount processed in our office last month was 2,105,967.11. This month it'll be about 10 million.
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's monthly report?
You will make that motion.
I made a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Oh, Pam's second. Any further discussion?
Roll call Pam.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Have you done department head?
Yeah, we did, but you can.
I just wanted to touch base, I know the audit came out. As you know, the most important thing to read is the findings. And I have addressed all of them with Elizabeth that affected our office. And then the only one I was not aware of, then Rachel and I talked about it. She had a call from Elizabeth as well as the opioid fund. By code, the opioid money that we got should have all interest put into that fund and that wasn't being done. So that, I'm doing that retroactive. So you'll have to do a resolution at some point. This fiscal year, I'm just going back at like a dollar 99 a month or something. Not a lot of money, but just so you know, anything else that was with my office has been addressed with Elizabeth already.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 11, discussion and possible action for Stacyville Tuesdays on Broad donation. I have Shannon online.
I am, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you want me just to get started or do you guys want to talk about it a little bit?
You can go ahead and explain what you do and the project.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Hello, my name is Shannon Adams and I currently run Tuesdays on Broad. Tuesdays on Broad is a family fun night held in Stacyville, Iowa. It's held once a month in June, July and August. And our main goal is to provide a fun night for all families to be able to enjoy and socialize with new friends. And we started Tuesdays on Broad in the summer of 2023 and we have had a great success over the last few years. And our nights consist of live music, food trucks, kids activities, bingo, inflatables, farmers markets, vendor shows and more. And I am seeking a monetary donation today of any amount to help fund our event. In return, you will be advertised on all of our media platforms as a sponsor.
Thank you. Any questions for Shannon?
Nope. It's a, a venue that's highly attended, has been the last couple of years and, and even on some rainy evenings. And it's a, a great community gathering and community support.
So she says she's just trying to get things pre-booked for events starting here and she's got to have the money to do that. So if she said any kind of donation, any thoughts on a number?
Other times we've done $500 for a committee, we have events, we may do something like this, so.
Okay.
One donation per year for events is what we've been doing, so.
So I would move that we donate $500 because I too have checked into that and that seems to be what we've done for, for St. Ansper. We did it for Carpenter one time, not too long ago, Riceville. I move to donate $500 to Tuesdays on Broad.
And Pam made a motion to approve, approve resolution number 1268-25 of the amount of $500 to Stacyville Tuesdays on Broad donation. Is there a second? Mark's second. Any further discussion?
Roll call Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Cindy.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you guys so much, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right. Items of note, meetings attended.
I had caught a meeting last night and that was kind of a light agenda meeting, just went over general business. Went over the audit, just for year 24 audit. It was good, just some normal things in regards to, I can't remember what it's termed, where we're a small community and some people have interrelated interactions and separation of duties, I think is what it's called. We get dinged for that, a lot of places due to, they did too. But otherwise it was pretty straightforward meeting.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
I had a landfill meeting, but I forgot all that, all my notes with my computer at home. So I'll give an update next week.
So I had an IT check-in meeting with Joel Roney and Ryan and we did another final review of the 2023 IT audit and review. And all of those items are now complete. And Ryan is focusing, which I believe we've spoke about, making sure that we're ready for the next Windows update and the multi-factor authentication and those projects. His big thing right now on the docket is the phone system and getting that in, up and running effectively. Joel did make a point of saying, please understand, I've never seen a phone system get installed that hasn't had a glitch or two, ever. And he was very emphatic in making sure that, that I understood that, that, you know, when you're talking a, a system of that magnitude, there, there will be a few glitches and we just want to make sure that we get them resolved quickly. And I think we had a little snafu with the time change over, but Rachel's everything is okay from what I understand now.
I think so. My phone's still ringing fine.
Okay.
It's often.
They call us for other offices, we just transferred it to.
The other meeting that I, I attended or meetings, I attended last night. I attended the Stacyville Kids Care informational meeting and they have a special meeting scheduled at 10 o'clock with the Board of Supervisors. They have been working on getting, getting funds for building a, a new daycare slash community center. They've been using the old school cafeteria and gymnasium since the Visitation School closed. It's a well-established daycare, they've been in operation for, I believe, at least 35 years. And they're, they're growing and growing and they're bursting at the seams in a, in a building that has a lot of challenges. And so, and it's not handicap accessible. So they had a grant that they, they just got notice of and so they're, they're trying to quickly scramble to, to assure that they can get this three-to-one grant. And so they had a meeting informing people last night of, of what their plans were. And, and then I also attended the Stacyville City Council meeting, which they talked some about the daycare slash community center. And they also talked about the fact that they're seeking a new clerk and they've had some change, you know, some updates of course, which Jenny has also experienced with some staffing and some changes to their, to their program. And, and they're also looking for a representative for Jenny's Committee for Economic Development. I've got a couple of ideas for you on that. That's it.
I had nothing.
I had nothing.
Public comments? No public comments? All right. Do we adjourn then, Pam, or we, oh, we canvass first? Sorry. Cam is the votes from March 4th special election.
I'm gonna have you guys sign after if that works. It's gonna be pretty quick. And so there was one provisional ballot in Stacyville for Mark Weiss and the ballot won't count because if he did not have ID and he didn't turn in anything to us. So that was the one provisional. And Forrest, Joe and Vicky Durgensen and Jim Roll for helping us pick up the night after the election because the weather coming is Wednesday, so that was nice that night. All right, so public measure PH, precinct seven, yes, 20, no, 15. Absentee one, yes, zero, no. Precinct eight, 51, yes, 11, no. Absentee one, yes, zero, no. Precinct nine, 1.3, yes, 14, no. Absentee eight, yes, zero, no. Precinct 10, Election Day, absentee was zero, yes and no. For a total of 204, yes, 40, no. Public measure PI, precinct seven, yes, 22, no, 13. Absentee one, yes, zero, no. Precinct eight, 50, yes, 11, no. One, yes, absentee, zero, no for absentee. Precinct nine, 121, yes, 14, no. Absentee eight, yes, zero, no. Precinct 10 was zero for Election Day and absentee. For a total of 203, yes, 38, no. Public measure WP, precinct eight, four, yes, zero, no. Absentee zero. Precinct 10, zero, yes, zero, no. Absentee two, yes, zero, no. For a total of six, yes and zero, no. So that was the Central Springs, that's what we'll sign today to send to Worth County. And then next week we'll have the Tier Two, which will include our members with the Worth County numbers.
Thank you.
Yep.
We will adjourn the meeting at 9:14.